Arthur City Council, Thursday, October 22nd. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. I'm Ms. Mary Watts.
Here.
Councilwoman Canapple.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Eagle.
Here.
Councilman Petty.
Here.
Councilman Reese. City Attorney Moore.
He's on the phone, okay. We have one item of business. It'll be a little different procedure because we're gonna have discussion from Dr. Duke and anyone else who wants to discuss this. Then we'll have an up or down vote to either grant or deny a special permit, and it'll be a roll call vote. So I'd like to start out.
Do we need to go ahead and make a motion and then go on to discussion?
No, not in this particular area. It's just an up or down vote on one item. Dr. Duke is asking if he could speak to the council first.
Yeah, thank you. We, uh, in front of you, we have a seven.
Look at that, you are our health officer.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, by the way, I am your public health officer. You guys confirmed me as your public health officer. And I'm also the director for the county coronavirus task force. And I also serve on the upper coming regional task force as well. And so that puts me with about nine other counties and their task force people and their positions.
Dr. Duke, I'm sorry to interrupt you, just for the record, so it's on here specifically, we're having an up or down vote on, to grant or deny a special event permit for the Jeep Creeper Halloween event in downtown Carthage on October 31st, 2020. I apologize, we've got to get that in the record. Okay, thank you.
And I'm also an advisor for other companies and other, one university, their coronavirus task force advisor as well, so I count, I spend several hours a day looking at coronavirus and COVID. But my main concern basically with, if you've ever looked at my website, is what's going on in Smith County. That's my main focus, is what's going on in Smith County. And obviously, the city's Carthage is the, is the, is the center of Smith County, what goes on here since I am a public health officer as well. And I was going to say that, you know, when I first started funding the health officer for the city, it was to deal with a goat issue, which, which we got to take care of and everything. But really, if you look at the charter, my duties are to keep, for the health and safety of the city as well. So that did come under that, but this, this is really more in line with what I really should be doing. You have, you have about seven pages in front of you, and I'm sorry that some of that print is so small, but I'll just go over there real quickly. You may have already had a chance to look at it. But basically, what, Smith County, we're really in a lurch in Smith County. We're not doing too well with managing our COVID. If you look, this, the first three pages are something that I sent to Mr. Bill when he was requesting to get a, to do the Jeepers Creepers downtown, the trunk or treat. And this, this, I prepared this on the 12th. And so if you can see there, that the test positivity rate for Smith County at that time was 15.10, which is well above the recommended 10% that the CDC recommends. Actually, most, they say that above 5%, the community rate is increased, there's an increase of rate spread that's above 5%. And 10%, the community denotes a very high risk spread throughout the year. And we are, at that particular time, we were at 15.30%. That was on the 21st. Today, we're at 15.43, so it's gone up. As of the, on the 21st, we were the third highest county with, we had the third highest test positivity rate in all 95 counties in Tennessee. As of today, we're number one. We have the highest test positive rate in all 95 counties in Tennessee. And this is not something new. If you'll notice there, we have actually been above 10% now for weeks to months. We haven't been below 10%. We hadn't even got close to it most of the time. So we're, we're just not doing too well with this. That's the second page, two graph, that graph you'll see there. Now, that, that graph was from 9-1 to 10-12, or 10, yeah, 10-12. And so, but if you'll notice, I did the trend, the trend lines. If you'll notice, we're even higher than the state of Tennessee, and we have been higher than the state of Tennessee for at least weeks to months. The state of Tennessee only has a test positive, the whole state of Tennessee, the whole one has a positive rate of 7.89. And as I said, we're at 15.10, it was on the 12th, and we're higher than that today. So we're, if you look at that trend line, that's a linear trend line, and I put my calculations there, how I got to the linear trend line. I didn't just draw that line, I knew that's actually calculated. And you'll notice that we're on a trajectory to continually, just continue, so, so we're headed in the wrong direction. If you'll go to page two, the second graph shows average rate recast per 100,000 population over 14 days. And that again goes from 7-1 to 10-12. And you'll notice that we, on the 12th, we were at 58.02. Anything above 10 is considered a drastic increase in spread and increase in activity in your county. And you can see the threshold of 10 down there, and we were 58.02 on the 12th. And you'll notice that trend line, what's in it, it's going up as well, we're going in the wrong direction. We just continue to do things poorly. So this virus has just continued to spread in our county, it's a wildfire. And we just recently had a walking day celebration downtown on Square. Now, I was asked to prepare a, the regular, the guidelines for that, give it to Mr. Wood, which I did, and he did what he was supposed to do. He tried his best to put things like what they were supposed to be. And he did pretty well what he was supposed to be. It was the participants that did not. There were a lot of them that didn't have masks, a lot of people didn't follow regulations, they got too close or whatever. And so that ended up, by the way, being a spreader event for our county.
Is that a documented spreader event?
Yes.
Do you have the documentation?
Well, I, I do, I do, I can show you the documentation, I didn't put it in here. And the reason why I didn't put it in, now let me help you just a little bit with this. That, I don't know whether I want to give you that or not, but there's a reason, there's a whole lot of politics involved in this, okay? And some of this, that information I got from epidemiologists outside, I don't know that they, well, and two, there's some issues with privacy associated with that as well. But trust me, it was, it wasn't a super spreader event, it was a spreader event.
That's my concern too, there's a lot of politics involved in it, whether you're on one side, politics on the other side, it really shouldn't even be a political thing. But I tried to look up how, if it was a documented event, and I could not find anything of it being documented.
Well, you won't find it, you won't find it. It's being hidden, you won't find it.
Okay, so why has it been hidden?
It's just been hidden, okay? At a lot higher level in the state than me. Okay, but anyway, just, regardless of, just ignore that, ignore that, look at all the other respects, I mean, you know, if you look at where we're at at 54, or 50 something over 10, I probably shouldn't really put that in there, because I got some of that information from a little different way. But anyway, moving on. If you go on down, based on CDC's recommendation, we're planning to host holiday celebrations such as Halloween, communities should assess COVID levels in their community to determine whether to cancel or limit numbers, and I got the source there as well. And honestly, on everything except that one, I can give you the source of it, and I'm not gonna give you that source on the Walken Day, you just gotta trust me on that one. And let me help you too. I take politics out of everything when I do this. Everything I look at is the numbers, I couldn't care less if it comes from, I only look at what comes from people that I know that has the right numbers. I even call the state occasionally and say, your numbers are wrong. Okay, that's, that's just where I am, I don't take it, I double check just about everything that I do.
And I'll go on record too, Dr. Duke, saying I have no belief that you put any politics into it, I know that you sincerely care, you, you're a man of character, and while we may have different viewpoints on this, I don't think that you put any, so I didn't want to, I want to make sure that's not insinuating that I feel that there's no politics involved. But just like, and I do agree, there are politics involved on one side, you're saying there are also politics involved on that other side too. And there are both people, there are both sides of this taking advantage of this situation 100%. And so my goal in this is to be, remain neutral, take the politics out, look at the facts, and do what we can as a city, what we're authorized to do, and as citizens, do what we should do as we do responsibly.
And, and that's why I'm giving you all these other numbers, like the 50 above 10, the 15% above 5%. That's in Smith County, and that comes directly from Tennessee Department of Public Health. I get it downloaded every single day, I've been doing, I've been looking at this and doing analysis ever since February, every single day. Must be about 34 hours a day on it for Smith County. So, laying all politics aside, this is a problem for our county, and, you know, it's real. But anyway, the city says, CDC, in community where recent COVID activities increase in the rate of spread of COVID, CDC recommends avoiding the following, high-risk activities help prevent the spread. And one of them, you'll notice, the second one down there is avoid trunk or treat, or tricks or handouts. And it just stands to reason, this, this, this thing is so catching, our spread rate is so high, it's so catching. If you think about even just trick or treat, somebody going from one, our kids going from one door to the other door to the other door, this thing is so, this is so contagious. And when the rate is so high, and the activity is so high in our county, you know, it's, I keep saying, my God, we got a pandemic going on here, this is real. And going from one place to other, going from one trunk to the other trunk to the other trunk, I mean, CDC is saying this, it's not just me, but, but it makes sense, it's, we see this. As a matter of fact, Tennessee hit some highs, we've had the highest hospitalization rate that's ever been registered over the last couple of days. And guess what, in Smith County, we had the highest rate, over the last four days, we've had the highest hospitalization rate. We, our hospital, ASK in, in the tertiary hospitals in Nashville are down to 13%. And the four, I think it's the four that, that takes the most severe patients are down to 5%. I mean, we're, this thing is going downhill big time, but, but it's tunneling out of, I mean, it's just tunneling here in Smith County. We just have people that, people just, anyway. I can tell, but, but anyway, we'll go on, we'll go on. And as you'll notice on the next page, where I did an update, that's for today, you know, we've gone from the next to highest test positive rate to the highest test positive rate in the county, in all counties, all my counties. And our 14-day average is, if you'll notice there, and I've got the hospitalization for the state of Tennessee, there are 1,300 cases for statewide, and that's set the highest record so far. And then the one under that is Smith County, and you'll notice there for what, four days, we've been the highest we've had so far, and it just keeps going up. And the reason why it goes up is because people are not doing what they're supposed to, they're not wearing masks and getting together, and they're, we're having all these get-togethers, and people are getting together, and that's the reason why. The next page, which is page six, this is an actual copy of the CDC. Now, the ones up above it, I took paragraphs out of them, but this is actually what the, this is a copy of that page, by the way, and I've got my source up there, and you'll see that that's where I got my information. And if you'll notice also that this, I think Mr. Todd, Mr. Moore was sent this as well, I didn't send it to him, but he got hawked out, and you'll notice there that I, I still thought that last line was, it said, and should, and should a decision be challenged, it would be very helpful for a legal offense perspective. You know, well, the last thing we want to do is to have an event where we're spreading this, I mean, we don't want to be known for that in our city. But anyway, so, in the, in that last page, which is separate, as yesterday, the, they changed what's called a close contact, and that's, and the reason why they did this is they found out that what we used to do was for six foot for 15 minutes, within six feet for 15 minutes. Now that we've realized that it's, it's more catching than really what we thought it was, and so now, that's a cumulative 15 minutes over 24-hour period. And then they moved it up to anybody with two, that has symptoms two days prior to, after, the, two days prior to having symptoms, if you were with them for 24 hours, 15 minutes over 24 hours cumulative as well, then you should isolate. Bottom line, you know, if you'll see what's happening in our schools, now, they're, you know, they're having seniors home, they're going back, they want to look forward, I mean, kids don't know where they're gonna be studying the next day, kids go here or not studying. And the, the big thing is, if our community rates was, and if the people in this county would do what they're supposed to do, and, and get the community right now, then we wouldn't be having as much in schools, we wouldn't be having, it's, it's all related. The nursing homes, long-term care facilities, would now be assisted living, one staff has adult assisted living. I mean, and that's since the rates have gone up. We see that, it's a direct relationship, I mean, it all makes sense, it really does. But politics has gotten into this, and unfortunately, people are getting sick and dying and losing work and losing all sorts of problems with this. So I, I just felt like it, as, as, you know, my recommendation as the public health officer for this city is to not allow that to occur, and that would be my official, professional recommendation for this not to occur. Not because I, I hate it, I might hate it because that, it's a wonderful thing, I mean, kids, any other time, I'd be the first one down there saying, let's put this thing up and say it for the kids and stuff. But, you know, it's not worth a bunch of kids getting sick, or, and they might not be getting sick, we're carrying it home to mom, grandma, mom, grandma, grandma getting sick, somebody dying, it's just not worth it, it's not worth it for, for trick or treats, it's just not worth it. So, now, I'll answer questions. I'm, I'm sorry, I probably shouldn't have put that one in there, Dr.
Well, this is my opinion on it. The CDC recommendations, I think those are great recommendations, honestly, your CDC recommendations, which is probably better recommendations than they could be given, that are a little bit less contact, a little bit better mask, you know, things like that that are more effective. And I, I like the recommendations, and my biggest thing though too is, we're, we're a government entity and a free nation, and we are also a volunteer state. And so I would advocate for people to take these recommendations, again, voluntarily. I don't see any issue with doing that, but there's, kids, kids are gonna go trick or treating outside, and they're gonna do it here, or they're gonna do it out there, or they're gonna set it up in a parking lot somewhere, or they're gonna do something. And, and we can put it out there, we can, like we did in Walken Days, and people can voluntarily do it, or they cannot. But again, the key word being volunteer, and that's what we gotta do, we can, we don't have, I mean, we got the authority to not shut down the streets, but we don't have the authority to cancel holidays, and this holiday is happening one way or another.
Yeah, but let me help you a little bit more.
Gordon, so we did cancel there.
Yeah, they canceled it, a lot of people canceled it. And, and by the way, there's three counties that started to mandate masks back again this, today, or what, we'll be starting back, I guess, Saturday, tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow. Let, let me tell you, if people would do that, if people would do that in this county, but they're not gonna do that in this county, that's the reason why, the reason why our numbers are so high is because the people won't do that in this county, they won't follow. You know what, if, if our numbers were way down, that would show me that people are doing what they're supposed to, and, and if I did not know what happened at Walken, then that, that was, that was one where people were supposed to be wearing their masks, well, they didn't, they didn't follow regulations.
Again, they may, or they may not, but no one's forcing anyone from trick or treating. And so if they, if they want to take precautions, if they feel that they don't need to go out, I think that should be an individual choice of that family, and, and say that with, with these recommendations in mind, if they choose they want to go out and participate with a mask on or whatever, they can take that recommendation in mind. If they decide that they don't want to do any of it, again, they have that freedom, that's all I'm saying.
Just to bring us back on course, our question tonight is whether or not to grant a permit to have this event downtown in Carthage, that's, that's, that's what this is all about, if we grant it or not. Could I have some, let's have some discussion from the rest of you, how you, what are you, Barbara, you have some?
I want to have too, I like to have fun, I love Halloween, we want to do something for the kids here, showing, you know, considering all this, what to do, but I don't think we can go against our health officer, I don't think our attorney would want us to go against our health officer's advice, he's done all the work, I have not done all this work. In fact, you know, it's, it's pretty bad, I knew it was getting worse, but, but this kind of clarifies it for us, so I appreciate all the work that Dr. Duke has done. And I don't think as a council, should we be challenged, that we can go against our health officer, if we are, we go against our health officer's recommendations and that we are challenged by someone that gets sick, or someone feels like we did not put the safety of our citizens first, then I think it would, would really be difficult for the city if we were challenged on this and we went against his advice, so that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Matt, do you have any thoughts?
I mean, I think, I think COVID is very real, I don't, I don't ever deny that, I think that people should make their own decisions, I don't, I don't feel like we need to be mandating what they can and can't do. I mean, Walmart's still open and it's packed, I mean, everything is still packed. I wouldn't mind finding some middle ground, maybe if we told, you know, Bill, like, only a certain amount of Jeeps, and we have all the Main Street, you know, we go from, what is it, Second Avenue to Ward, isn't that what they normally do, Second to Ward? And maybe space out instead of six feet per Jeep, you know, whatever, maybe that's some extra middle ground.
Sam, do you have some?
I do know, he was, he was actually not, he had recommended that they have each car create a slide so that they aren't touching the candy, that it would just slide into the bag, and they wouldn't be, you know, that close. I do know he would put everything in safety measure that he could in place.
I'm willing to fight middle ground, though.
Sam?
I, I agree with Matt, I mean, but I also appreciate the information that Roger's put forth to us, it's a scary situation, I think the Jeepers Creepers are a great organization, and in good times, it's a great event. If we could figure out a middle ground, I'd be interested in entertaining and looking at it, but I don't know that we have the time to do it this short period.
Well, I think that should be something that Bill could.
I'm sorry, Jack, what can I say?
Well, I'd like to know if there's an insurance policy in place that's gonna protect us, because I think the very people that are refusing to wear masks are gonna be the very people that will be suing when they catch this and one of their family members dies from it.
I believe that the Chamber of Commerce has an insurance policy, if there's some sort of suit.
It does, it does, it knows like this.
And, and again, it's like, I mean, and I'm all for middle ground, how do we, how do we create middle ground as a governing body for a private entity that's doing just a hour event down there, you know, I mean?
Let me help you just a little bit, and I, just, I mean, as far as middle ground and trying to do that, that's what I asked to be done last time with Walt, and, and he said he couldn't do it because of what the structure was, a lot of those things, he said he couldn't do. Now, he tried to do them, but it was just physically impossible for him to do some of the things that we really needed to keep people safe, again, so.
And again, and again, Dr. Duke, and I know that this is not political, but we need to take the Walt question into account if we can, because you're saying it's a documented event, and we don't have documentation on it being an event, and, and again, I, let's, let's just say it's 100% fully documented or not, I'm sure that somebody got COVID at Walken, I mean, the odds are they have, okay? But again, this is a, this is a free nation, people can go do trick or treating if they want to, and they can take these recommendations or not. Now, we can shut down the streets, but they're gonna do it anyway.
Councilman, again, let's bring it back to, our question tonight is not about where kids can go trick or treating, or if they can go trick or treating, the only question for us tonight is, do we, do we grant a permit for an organization to set up downtown in Carthage on public property to have children going around and around in this situation?
We're not allowing for that.
Excuse me, we're not saying kids can't go trick or treating, but we're saying are we, and, and Gordon's didn't do this, so is Carthage gonna allow an organization to set up downtown so kids can come in, probably closer proximity to trick or treat?
The liability would fall the same as the kid went from a house, a house big down the sidewalk and caught COVID and walked by, it's the same liability?
No, it's not, it's not.
It's a different liability.
You issued a permit, you're saying that you, you're giving, yeah, and you're saying we, we promote this, so.
What's the liability for the businesses that got shut down, Matt, you know, what's the liability on a lawsuit there? I mean, if we can put a lot of liability on sexual transmitted diseases that way, we can, we can expand this as far as.
You're getting way off subject, we're talking about whether to grant a permit or not.
Roger, your answer is.
Okay.
Now, the Walken Days were like the 22nd of September, okay? And at that point, we had how many cases?
Uh, let's see, let me go back there. You, you will see, now, I will say that part of this is since the school started that, part of you look, it was close, when the, when the curves are really going up, that's when the school started that, that's when the curve really started going up. But if you look at it, you'll see that the curve actually took a little bit of a bump afterwards, and that was right after the Walken Days lost, and it took a little bit more of an inclination. And you may not see it as much on the curve as if you look at it, the numbers, and I, I, I could have probably given you rings of data with this, you know, I get rings, but it's, funny, funny, you may be, ask your question again, so maybe I can answer.
I was curious how much it's gone up, the rate in this county has gone up since the Walken Days, or the, a number of cases, either way you can answer that.
Yeah, well, the, I.
But I know there's, there's other factors involved.
Yeah, there is other factors involved, and, and also, we, we haven't seen all of the ones, because the use, the use of this data, what we're seeing today usually happened about a week and a half or two weeks ago, okay? It just takes that long to go through the system. And some of these, if they were hospitalized, which I think that may have been what happened with some of them with the Walken Days, you won't see that until about a month afterward. Again, I may have got my, my information planned desperately about Walken Days, but.
Well, I'd just say, go ahead and vote on it, they're gonna trick or treat one way or the other.
I want to hear everybody's discussion before we vote, please, because this is not a motion.
Is it okay if I just one time finish the sentence before you talk? That'd be great.
It's good to point.
You know, anyways, I think that we all pretty much have our minds made up, I think that they're going to trick one way or the other, we, and I think the opinion here is whether we take on liability for a virus or not, if we're gonna start that trend, we'll start the trend, I don't know, but I'd say go ahead and call the questions up.
Again, let's focus on what the question actually is, and it's not a motion, we're voting up or down to grant, either grant or deny, I'm sorry, Mr. Moore, do you, I haven't even answered.
I can make a motion, there's nothing against that.
Mr. Moore, is there anything you would like to add to this?
Well, first of all, there, I'm not really not able to hear the discussion, where, you know, I can hear you clearly, what, the gist of what I'm getting, what I might suggest, I, I do agree the decision is to approve or deny, however the ordinance requires that the vote is to deny the permit, that the council shall specify the reasons in writing for the denial.
Okay.
So what I might suggest is that someone either make a motion to approve the permit or to deny the permit with reasons. or to deny the permit with reasons for the denial, and then have a more discussion that you want to have, and then have a vote.
So it would be a motion either to, to grant or a motion to deny, is that what you're saying? We're hearing it.
Correct. And if, if the motion is to deny, then it needs to specify the reasons for the denial, or at least any reason for the denial.
Okay, let me ask you, if the motion is, if someone says I'm making a motion to grant the permit, and then it, it doesn't pass, is that the same thing you're saying? Then we have to give a reason it didn't pass?
Well, then I think, yeah, then it would be back to the board to, for someone to make a motion to deny. And I realize the, the permit's not approved unless, you know, the council lets to approve it, but, um, the ordinance schedule requires that if there's a motion to deny, that the reasons be specified by the court, so.
So again, I'm sorry, but if we made a motion to grant it and that doesn't pass, you're saying we have to go back and do another motion to deny? Am I hearing that correctly?
I would suggest that you do, yes.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the permit.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion on approving the permit?
Excuse me. Uh, Barbara, would you like to discuss any more of this, or anything else you'd like to add?
Well, we obviously have that on the floor now. Uh, I again will say, I do not think we can go against our health officer's recommendation, and I, I will not vote to have the permit approved.
Jacqueline, you have anything else you'd like to add? Sam? Matt?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then let's have the vote. It's going to be a roll call vote, and this is to, the vote, the question is to grant the permit. So let's have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Watts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel?
No.
Councilwoman Scott?
No.
Councilman Evil?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
No.
Um, so, so what's it? We have three noes and two yeses.
Okay, Mr. Moore, we have three noes and two yeses.
Okay, so that motion did not pass.
Right. So is that what, is that the end of it, or what, or you're saying now?
I, I would suggest that someone make a motion to, to deny with a reason for the denial, you know, presumably based upon some of the information that Dr. Duke has presented.
Okay.
Um, and then have a vote on that.
I would do that.
Okay, Barbara makes the motion to deny.
I make a motion to deny the permit based on the, um, data from the documents and the health of, of Smith County as recommended by Dr. Duke.
Okay, do I hear second tonight?
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Scott. Uh, any further discussion on that? But, but, let's go ahead and vote, okay, Sam?
Vice Mayor Watts?
No.
Councilwoman Knappel?
I'm sorry, this is, the vote is to deny.
Deny.
Say yes or no.
Yes.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Evil?
No.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Okay, so three yeses on that and two noes.
Mr. Moore, it's three yeses and, uh, three yeses, two deny, two noes. So that now we just write this up, is that correct?
Correct, so that, that motion to deny passed, is it?
Right.
So I think you're, you're done.
Okay, all right, uh, can I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All right, call it, please.